All right, John. We're going to call the meeting of the Carson City Board Supervisors back to order, and we're not going to take up item 13. We've already completed 14, so we're going to take up item 13 and we'll move to 15, which is Board Supervisor's report. So, let's do open space, the draft management plan for Carson City, open space in parks in the Carson River area. Ann, you're going to take us through this, Ms. Bollinger? Good, go.
Good morning. For the record, Ann Bollinger, here, new open space administrator. Mayor and members of the board today, the item in front of you is a discussion only on the draft management plan for Carson City open space and parks in the Carson River area. With me I have Ms. Lin Zhong from Resource Concepts. She will begin the presentation. But to provide a little background and what this document actually means for us, as far as the city is concerned and other plans throughout the city, I hope you are all familiar that we have master plans. So, we have the city master plan, and then we have the parks and recreation master plan, open space management plan. So, those are some of the documents that help provide direction for us as we worked on now the management plan. After this, this document identifies some of the action items that we should be considering on the management of our lands. So, after this, we will need to work on a work plan, which will identify priorities, and then actually, hopefully, provide some budgets and dollar figures for us as we move forward. Let's see, I think with that in mind, I will turn it over to Lin to start the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Board members.
Good morning, Mayor and Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here. For the record, Lin Zhong with Resource Concepts, and it is a pleasure for me to walk you through the management plan. So, this management covers open space, lands and park lands that are in the vicinity of the Carson River. The purpose of the plan is to satisfy a requirement in the BLM conservation easement to have a management plan, to describe the land condition, the development and uses of the lands, to summarize pertinent information in existing documents, and to recommend management actions. So, to date, we have handed the Open Space Advisory Committee pieces of the document until, it's starting in January, and then in August, we had a nice big open house that was very well attended, and then followed by an Open Space Advisory Committee meeting and presented the plan. We also presented the plan in September, and now we're presenting it here to you today. And we anticipate that the final plan for adoption will happen sometime in the summer or fall of 2015. So, we'll be back here in front of you. So, just walking you through the plan, chapter one is an introduction. It's an overview of the management area. It includes a breakdown of acres for the properties, which there's 5,000, about 5,300 acres, and about, it includes about 10 miles of the Carson River. It's important to note that this document is based on existing management guidance documents. So, it doesn't really develop new things. It really goes back to these existing approved documents, and where there's things that need to be new, it identifies those as things that need to be vetted and worked out. So, that is a very important point to remember when you're looking through the document. There are three types of properties described in this document. One, primarily the conservation easement lands, which are subject to the conservation easement agreement between the city and the BLM. There's open space properties, and then there's parks and trails properties. And each one is handled very differently in different chapters of the document because they have different constraints on them. Each property, we describe the management guidelines and restrictions, their location, their characteristics, existing facilities, the recreation management on the land, and then the summary of recommended actions. So, within each, within each property, we have recommended actions, and at the end of each chapter, we have a summary for you to look at, which is rather handy. So, we start with the conservation easement lands in chapter two. These lands include, do I have a little, there we go. These lands include the Ambrose Carson River Natural Area, going from north to south. It includes the Prison Hill Recreation Area, which is the largest property. This includes both the motorized use area to the south and the non-motorized use area to the north. It includes Silver Saddle Ranch, which includes the agricultural lands, East Silver Saddle Ranch, the Historic Ranch Complex, and the mitigation wetlands. Chapter three describes the open, oh, gosh darn it. Chapter three describes the open space properties, which includes the properties in Carson River Canyon, the Golden Eagle Property, they're in blue here, the Mexican Dam Property, the Moffett Property, the Morgan Mill Preserve, which is a little tiny thing up here, the unnamed Anderson Ranch and Gerard Ranch acquisitions, which is this large area here, and then the unnamed property up here, which was donated property by Viddler. Oh, I see, when I tap it, it goes, okay. Chapter four are the properties in purple. They're the parks and trails properties, and these are the properties that have the least amount of restrictions of all the properties. It includes the Ambrose Carson River Natural Area Parks Part, which is the purple area here, the Carson River Park down here, the Prison Hill Recreation Area, which is adjacent to the conservation easement properties. It includes Riverview Park and the Korean War Veterans Memorial Park, which is right next to the park.
One of the clarifications I would like to make on this particular slide, for the second time, you're seeing the Ambrose Carson River Natural Area and the Prison Hill Recreation Area. In this instance, the Ambrose Carson River Natural Area are acres located along the river in those, that is an area that our Parks Department acquired in the '70s. It is not owned by BLM, it is not being transferred by BLM, but it is adjacent to what we will be receiving, but it does not have the restrictions except just for any park restrictions related to that property. For the Prison Hill Recreation Area, on the landscape, you would know this area of where the water tank is located. This area is being transferred from, from BLM per the lands bill, but that lands bill on the map that was associated identified that area on this map for parks and public purpose. So, therefore, it is not restricted by the terms of the conservation easement. So, that is the difference.
Prison Hill itself?
Yes, Prison Hill.
Who owns that, why would put any of the conservation easement?
Sure, so some of the background, the Ambrose Carson River Natural Area, Prison Hill and Silver Saddle Ranch are currently still owned by BLM. We actually anticipate a transfer next year. We have not heard that officially from BLM, but we are aware of their process. And the conservation easement was identified in, I believe, the congressional bill. And the reason for this is some of the area next to Silver Saddle Ranch and BLM, Carson City purchased, it was threatened by development. Carson City was able to step in and assist BLM. We purchased it until they could find the money. And this goes back, I think, in 1997. It took a couple of years for BLM to find the money. By that time, the land doubled in price, so we actually financially gained from that transaction. And then, when Carson City was talking about the land exchange, some of the community groups were concerned about the American tax dollar Carson City gained. How can we protect these properties in the interest of the American people? And at that time, a conservation easement was identified for these particular parcels.
Which was approved by the board?
Which was also approved by the board in December 2014.
Ten.
Ten, 2010.
Yeah.
Ann, Prison Hill north to the west, who owns that blue area?
Just to make sure I understand the area, John. So, you're talking right here in blue?
That's correct.
And so, also to help everyone identify where we are, Fairview Drive is right along this corner. This is Nevada State Prison, actually, on, which includes land to the east of Fairview Drive.
Okay, so, so the, that little area that juts out of Prison Hill. To the right is Carson River Road, and to the left is just some line in the sand?
Correct.
The parks property also includes several trails and trailheads. It includes the Carson River Aquatic Trail, which is the river trail along the river to the Carson Lyon County line. It includes the Empire Ranch Trail, which is right here. It includes the Hidden Meadows Trailhead. It includes the Mexican Ditch Trail, which goes along the Mexican Ditch down here. And it includes the Morgan Mill Road River Access Area up here as a trailhead. Chapter five of the plan goes into the management considerations for all properties. It begins with a discussion of the adjacent lands managed by the BLM and the state of Nevada. It considers the maintenance and performance levels of service for all of the properties. It discusses recreation and resource management, and has a summary of the recommended actions. Now, the resources that we look at for each of the properties is fairly comprehensive. I won't, I won't read each of those, but you can see that quite a few, any resource item that, that anybody ever mentioned or thought of related to these properties, we discuss in this section. Chapter six is the administration of the properties. It goes into related plans and ordinances, the fees and reservations. It discusses communication planning, and again, a summary of the recommended actions for each one of those. Chapter seven goes into the staffing and budgets for the properties. It discusses the division of responsibilities, the staffing, and the budgets. Did you want to say anything about that?
One of the clarifications that has come to our attention recently, and so I will take this opportunity to provide that, is on page seven dash nine, table 18, we do need to clarify ongoing expenses versus the one-time capital expenses, which would be the vehicle, the mules, radios, et cetera. It's not every year unless Brad approves it.
Thank you, Ann. So, as we've been showing the, the plan around to the public, we have received quite a few comments. They've been very good. We want to make this plan as clear as possible, with the intent as clear as possible. It has been brought to our attention that there are some discrepancies in some of the acreage numbers, and the acreage, the acreages in the document are described in several different ways. The best, the best table is on page one dash two, which really breaks down the, the properties. But in the document itself, we talk about several different acres, how many acres have or in the flood plain, how many acres are along the, you know, miles or abutting the river. So, it is, it can be a little, a little confusing to wrap your head around it, but, but we try to make that as clear as possible in table one dash two. We've received quite a few comments regarding both non-motorized and motorized uses, and as you might imagine, the non-motorized use people are very concerned, particularly in the Prison Hill area. The division between the motorized use area and the non-motorized use area is fairly blurred, although it's my understanding that the BLM this past month has erected new fencing that demarcates that boundary between those two areas. Of course, the motorized use, use people definitely-
Is that fencing down in the south? I haven't seen any on the, on the Fifth Street side.
Correct, yes, that the fencing along Snyder, is it Snyder Avenue, Snyder Drive, up to the summit, between the motorized, non-motorized area.
So, is there a way then, if you get to the top of the hill up there, that precludes vehicles from going down into the, what's sometimes referred to as Dead Truck Canyon, or, or going over and getting stuck on top of the Stewart S?
From my understanding, they have erected a fence. I have not seen it myself, and I don't know what they have done at the summit.
Okay.
So, of course- Of course, the, the motorized use, people are concerned that they don't want their existing uses curtailed in any way. There, 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 there are some issues regarding some existing areas where there, there are currently motorized uses where on conservation easement land, it isn't allowed. So, that's being worked out through the document. A lot of concern-
On that?
Go ahead.
Okay, as long as we're into that. Okay, it's my understanding that the city is going to have BLM take active roles and prohibit non-authorized motorized use before the city gets it, so that the city doesn't have to deal with basically kicking people off of an illegal use.
Everybody looked at me to answer that one. Thanks a lot. That is our hoax. We've been working with BLM to, to take an active role, because by the terms of the conservation easement, as we've been discussing, there are some areas where technically, motorized vehicles are not allowed. I'm thinking basically the, the north end, the very far north end, that little point that you, that little peninsula you pointed out, John, where motorized use is commonly occurring there. According to BLM's regulations, that's not allowed. They have not enforced that very vigorously in the past, and we've had many discussions with them, that the conservation easement that they have emplaced upon us, that was approved by the board, specifically doesn't allow motorized use in that area. So, that kind of puts us in a little bit of a tenuous situation, that if we're going to enforce the conservation easement that they have given us, we're going to start enforcing uses that they have not enforced in the past. And so, we've had lots of conversations with BLM. We're hoping that they, between now and the time they turn that property to us, that they, they start enforcing those areas and try, try to pave the way for us in our ownership of the property, so to speak.
On Hell's Bells, to the other side of the street, other side of Fifth Street from there, that's state lands and also private property, which now has for sale signs on it. The city got a grant. We put in fencing and sidewalks for safe routes to school, so the kids wouldn't walk across it, and to prevent motorized use because of the complaints we've gotten from the people that live there. Are we going to have BLM put up fencing around that area?
Well, I think you're talking about the, the safe route to schools pathway, the one that goes behind Moffett Hill. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I'm referring to the fact that the city threw a safe routes to school grant-
Yeah.
-by, not by intention, but by, well, actually, we wanted to keep the kids off, off that state property there. So, we, we wanted to block that property off, so that children would not walk across an unsafe area. But it has worked. It has kept people out of that state lands. Now, are we going to ask BLM to put up fencing around Fifth Street, so that people cannot drive motor vehicles in there?
You know, we have not addressed that with BLM. We certainly can, you know, have that conversation with them. We have not addressed that specific area.
Another big topic that has been discussed quite a bit at the previous meetings is public access and uses. Particularly, a real hotspot is down by the Golden Eagle Property. Dogs have come up as a big issue. The Retriever Club has been active in writing how they really would like the Silver Saddle Area to be open to some of their training. Other people have said they really want to make sure that, that dogs are on leashes and owners pick up after them. And then finally, shooting has been a big issue. The Sheriff's Department has commented that they really find value in being able to train their horses with blanks, but still it's loud, it sounds like a gun, at Silver Saddle Ranch, and they hope that they can continue that. And then, many commenters have said they, they really hope that the properties are close to shooting, because it's really scary when they're hiking and riding, such as the Carson River Canyon, which currently, these areas are, are open to, to shooting.
One related topic to shooting that I would like to take this opportunity to try to clarify as well relates to hunting. And Carson City Municipal Code, chapter eight, identifies distances from residents and roads where people can shoot their firearms. On open space properties, we would fall under that general regulation, but when you move out to more of the rural areas, currently, we do not have an ordinance that prohibits any type of shooting. The hunting regulations for the state do say hunters can hunt anywhere unless it's posted. So, we also don't have signs right now to prohibit hunting. Both those subjects, we will be discussing further with the Open Space Advisory Committee.
If I could add to that, too, and, and just add to the complexity of, of some of these issues, as you all know, there's, there's shooting and there's other types of shooting. You know, for instance, you could have high-powered rifles for, for big game hunting. That's one, that's one issue, but then you also have shotguns for duck hunting, and duck hunting has been the past of popular activity through the Carson River Canyon area. So, you know, those are the kind of complexities, the, the complex issues that we're trying to ferret out. The difference, but when you say no shooting, what does that actually really mean?
Can we go back to roads for one more time? Off of Mexican Dam Road and Sierra Vista Lane, public access, basically. Is open space going to improve and maintain those roads? The RTC currently has an obligation to maintain Sierra Vista, but there, as you increase public use in the area, you're going to increase road traffic. And that's the major way to get back into Mexican Dam, is to go down Sierra Vista, not to go through Golden Eagle. So, what's going to happen there?
As you refer to Mexican Dam, are you talking about the historic structure itself?
I'm, I'm talking about Mexican Dam Road and Sierra Vista Lane that come off of Carson River Road to the north.
So, on the east side of the river?
It was washed out, pretty much.
Excuse me? Just to clarify, and you're talking the east side of the river?
I'm talking the east side of the river, yes.
Yes, no. Carson City would not maintain roads that are roads. We would maintain roads that are on open space properties.
That's a problem. Okay, so is Sierra Vista Lane on open space property?
No, it is not.
Okay, Lin, thank you very much. Any other comments from the board? Public comment, anybody want? This is draft plan, Morris?
Good morning, Mayor, Board. For the record, Morris White. I have some documents I would like to have entered into the record. May I approach? I want to thank staff for their hard work on this plan. I will admit to probably being the source of the acreage discrepancies being pointed out, and thanks staff for working on those. The document you're going to receive has a pretty extensive list of what those discrepancies are. We don't need to belabor that point today, since staff is working on it. I do have some other questions, though, that I have asked in the past, but have not yet received any clarification. And if you'll go to the bottom of that first page there, page two dash two of the plan, in the second paragraph, that second paragraph is a verbatim repeat of the conservation easement, section five and page two, except that the wording, without limiting the foregoing, has been left off. And I'm wondering why that that's not there any longer, and wonder if it should stay there, as it's simply taking that document and placing it into the management plan.
Well, I think, you know, this is a draft. I don't know if we need to answer these questions, Morris, but I think it's quite appropriate to tee them up, and then we'll take them, so tee up the questions, and then these folks down here, the open space folks, will take them under advisement and go for, so we, we know. Okay. Thanks.
And then, on the second page there, page two dash three, in the second paragraph, starting with the first sentence there, for official use, and goes on and on and on, and ends with section seven. If you read that sentence, it really doesn't seem to make any sense as to what's the subject, what's the point, what's going on there. I would like to get some clarification on that also.
Same, same comment?
Thank you. And then, lastly, oh, I meant to have staff get one of those, so that they could follow along here also. Okay, all right. On page four dash twenty-one, in regards to the Prison Hill's Recreation Area, again, as I have many times in the past, have concerns about the elimination of historical motorized use. As I've said in the past, if there is a reason certain to eliminate motorized use, I don't have a problem with saying, "We can't do this anymore." But again, the elimination of motorized use on this 114 acres appears to be arbitrary. I haven't found any studies that says the properties are in jeopardy. There's been no discussion, it's just simply stopped. I realize BLM is doing it on their own at this point. However, BLM is working with staff and coming up with these rules and the verbiage and things that are in the conservation easement. And so, again, I want to express my concern that the motorized public is losing another piece of property for their recreation, and would ask that staff reconsider that this being taken off the motorized used areas.
Okay, thanks. Morris, let me-
Thank you.
Let me just, got a moment here. You know, the, the area where I get concerned about motorized use, I, I think you're talking about down further south, but I'm up there quite a bit, and it seems like everybody's trying to drive a car in that, you know, where you go up Prison Hill, you go to the top, and then you go down, there's a dip, a valley there, then you go up to the next one. Seems like all the time, people are getting a car stuck there, or they're driving off over the top of the S, and, and I'm just, you know, one, it's kind of odd that people would even think about doing that, but, but that's not the area you're talking about, or is it?
No, that's the 114, but, but I do, in, in general, these properties being taken out of, of motorized use, you know what? I agree, you can't fix stupid. But I've been four-wheel driving my whole life, and I've admittedly been in some pretty stupid situations. It's just part of the game. One of my concerns is, as we eliminate these properties that are close into town, we're going to drive these young kids that don't know what they're doing, deep into the pine nuts, where if they get screwed up, now they're really in trouble. And I understand everybody's concern about erosion and, and preserving nature and all of that sort of thing, but for myself, I'd rather have my 16-year-old son, if he was still 16, screwed up over here on Prison Hill than deep in the, in the pine nuts.
Okay, thanks, Morris. Thanks for letting me ask you a question. All right. All right, anything else? Anybody else got some concerns? Thanks for putting it on writing. Who, let me, question, go.
One, and Roger, probably for you. The area is designated equestrian. Is there any thought to any sort of wild horse refuge? I know you're not really taking a stand on that, but just asking a question.
Well, that has actually been discussed, I think, in the past. There was, I think mainly from wild horse advocates, the idea of, of making Silver Saddle Ranch some type of wild horse refuge. And of course, you know, BLM's policy is that they really don't want wild horses on that property, and they've actually removed the, the herd that was there. that property, and they've actually removed the herd that was there. So we really don't have a wild horse issue now. We hear that they may be coming back, you know, that they're getting closer to town and that, but we have not talked about using that area as a wild horse refuge. You know, that would really, that would probably provide a whole different set of management issues for us, that quite frankly, existing staff is probably not equipped or qualified to take on. It doesn't mean that that can't happen in the future, and staff that can be trained or acquired to do that type of thing, but I think we'd also have to be very careful about the size of the area, and whether that area would be of adequate size for horses. Horses roam, as you know, over a widespread area, and to try to keep them contained within an area like that would probably be, you know, very difficult to do.
The other question I have is with regards to water rights in Buzzee's Ranch. Costs are being looked into, because down the road, that will become an issue. There are no water rights there, as I understand.
That is correct. And in the purchase of that Buzzee Ranch area, the Anderson Jarred Ranch area, the city made a commitment to keep that in agricultural purposes, and to keep that green. And so that's one of the areas that we're definitely going to have to be addressing here in the near future, of how we can provide water to that area in the future.
Going back to Karen's comment about wild horses, there's an additional concern for the city, and that's the private property owners in that area who have horses. And when Steadley and his herd were there, it was a real problem. Our horse was there, and it was attacked more than once by that herd. So I don't know that the city wants to get in a position of trying to manage a herd in a confined area where there's domestic horses that could be damaged, and then there's the potential liability on the part of the city for those.
That's a good point.
Just a thought, in terms of the VNT and attraction, has any of that area around, up by where the bridge has been considered, or that new industrial park up there been considered as perhaps a location?
We have not had conversations with the VNT people regarding what their plans are. You know, we have heard things off, you know, that maybe more speculation and rumor than anything else I probably shouldn't, you know, go into about where their future tracks may go, but we have not had any conversations with them.
As to the off-road on the northern part of Prison Hill, my worry is not off-road versus no off-road. My worry is that BLM is going to hand us this piece of property with a specific easement in place that's going to take an act of Congress to change. And unless that, unless we have worked out what that property can be used for, or unless BLM has stopped motorized use on that piece of property, then it's going to fall on Carson City to implement BLM's policy, and Carson City's going to have to pay for it. I'd rather have us receive a property that we can live with for a number of years, than receive a property that has an internal dispute that we cannot resolve without going to Congress. And that's my whole point about this, is we need to have Prison Hill in a form, either through BLM management to stop the illegal off-road, or BLM authorizing off-road, excuse me, off-road that we want in that area. But when we receive this property from BLM, it has to be in a condition that doesn't cost us any money.
I think that's well stated, and that's been our concerns in our discussions with BLM as well, on the staff level, that, and that is probably the one area that is, probably has the greatest potential to generate some controversy right at the beginning, is that area on the very north end of Prison Hill. And we will continue, we'll continue to have dialogue with them about that.
I would suggest that the attitudes are sufficiently, well, kept, that it might incite violence, actually. People take their off-roading seriously, and people take their hiking seriously, and it's not our discussion. We need to receive that property in a way that we can live with it, that the people of Carson City want to live with it.
We will communicate those sentiments to-
Another thing on money, minor amount. It's my understanding that these documents cost $100 each to produce. Is there a website or someplace where I can download it?
The easiest place to find that document online is our, is the Park's Recreation homepage. It's still, yeah.
All right, anybody else? This is a non-action item. Go ahead, Anne, you want it?
One additional comment, I would just like to inform the board, because I am pleased with the public comment. We have received over 200 public comments on this document. So we'll take our time for staff to review and make the edits necessary.
Very good. All right, very good. All right, anything else? Ready to move on? Thank you, Anne, thank you, Roger, thank you, Lynn. Say hello to everybody over there. Good job, all right. We'll now move on to non-action items, for item 15, for the Board of Supervisors. Anybody got any non-action items? I'll just report that last Saturday night, the city manager, I think Supervisor Aboud, myself, I think Mr. Plemmell, and it might have been others, attended the Nevada Humane Society, I think it's called, the Denims and-
Blue Jeans Ball?
Blue Jeans Ball, which was really well-attended. And they were extremely appreciative, you know, that now we're forming a partnership, they were extremely appreciative that a lot of Carson City folks took the time and effort to come over and support the Humane Society efforts. So, that was, it was a fun night. Okay, anything else? Nick?
Just one more item, Mr. Mayor, to segue in on the Humane Society Blue Jeans Ball. December 3rd at 4:30 PM, the Chamber will be sponsoring a ribbon-cutting of the Humane Society over at Carson City Animal Services on, in their current location.
Very good. Thank you, Nick, thanks for reminding me of that. All right. Are we done? Are we ready to recess as a board? Because the next, if we recess now, I mean, let's see, do we recess? Yeah, we recess, I got to figure, because we're going to go into-
Recession is a closed session for the-
Yeah, let's see, we recess, because then we're going to have a closed session to meet with the lawyers pursuant to 288, 220, subsection four. So, we'll now stand in recess and close the session, so we can talk with the lawyers.